Call to order, City of Lawrence, Common Council Public, uh, Lawrence Government Center Meeting. The time is, uh, the time is 6:33 and the date is September 5th. Please stand for Pledge Allegiance in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, Dan, do you mind? A little prayer, please?
Follow heads. Dear heavenly Father, we come today with an open heart and open mind to the business of this Lawrence city. We ask that you protect us and guide us. We ask that you protect our first responders. We ask all these in your name. Amen.
Amen. All right. Uh, we do have a quorum, but we have some folks on the, um, online, on the team system, so we will have to do, um, any voting by, uh, roll call, um, today. Any comments of, uh, council members or special recognitions? Seeing, Sharon? All right, seeing, we'll move right along then. All right. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting on August 7th, 2023, and August 16th, 2023, and executive session, August 16th, 2023. Can I get, uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
You seconded it?
Counsel Freeman, motion. Counsel Russomoroff. All right, we'll go with a, uh, roll call vote, a show of hand. We'll start with Counsel Russomoroff.
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Giles, yes. Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
Yes.
Uh, uh, and, um, Chevlot, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
Tom, yes.
Sean?
Oh, I didn't realize Sean was on. I'm sorry, Sean. I don't see his face or nothing.
Yeah, I need to see him here.
Gosh, he's got a little cold, too, looks like it. Um, Sean, are you, you make yourself available? Yeah, so just...
He says sound is not working.
Okay. We just...
He's gonna log off and log back in, so you can just, no vote at this time.
Okay. All right.
But he can vote when he comes back on?
If he wants to, sure.
Okay. All right, so that's, uh, what that's, that's eight of, eight of us? You got it? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, moving right along. Signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorizations of payments. Can we entertain a motion?
Still move.
So move, and a motion, Counsel Wells, you get a second?
Second.
Second, and Counsel Russomoroff? We'll go start a roll call vote. We'll start here with Counsel Chevlot?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
Yes.
Counsel Chavis?
Yes.
Counsel Giles, yes? Counsel Lawrence, honor, not, uh, oh, this is, uh, Counsel Russ, uh, Russell?
Yes.
Counsel Russell, yes. Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Russomoroff?
Yes.
Man, I think Sean's still off, okay.
This is just a question. If he's still on and we still have eight votes, can it still not pass even?
Oh, it can still, it still pass. I just didn't know if he wanted to record a vote. We've done that before when somebody's had technical difficulties.
I understand, okay.
Yeah.
I just thought, I heard you say we have to go back and re...
No, no.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's all right.
Um, no, no, no committee reports at this time, none. Moving right along. All right.
I'm just writing yesterday's technical issues.
Yeah, make sure we, before we open up the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. All right, so at this time, we're going to have a public hearing for proposal number nine, appropriating funds and amending the 2023 budget with respects to the general fund.
There was a sheet in the back, did anybody sign it?
I don't think anybody signed it when I looked back there earlier.
Nothing?
Okay. Do we just, uh, take a couple moments if you're, if you're correct?
Just go ahead and close it.
Close it. Yep.
All right, public hearing is closed. Thank you. All right. Moving on to, moving on to unfinished business. Um, proposal number nine, proposal number eight, 2023. Have the clerk please read by title.
Proposal number eight, 2023, introduced by Counsel Whitfield. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana repealing certain secondary business permit fees in Title IV, Articles One and Two of the Lawrence Municipal Code.
All right. Um, this has already been assigned to code. We haven't had a code meeting scheduled quite yet. Okay, so that will remain in code. All right. Uh, proposal number nine.
Proposal number nine, 2023, introduced by Counselors Whitfield, Freeman, Chevlot, and Russell. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana appropriating funds and amending the 2023 budget with respect to the general fund.
All right. Proposal number nine was also assigned to finance. Um, and we have not had a, a finance meeting related to this quite yet.
Um, not that I know of, nor do I know if there's one scheduled. Under the law, you certainly could still entertain a motion, or you could vote on it tonight, um, since we've had the public hearing.
Okay.
So we've met that requirement, um, or you could entertain a motion, um, to delay it until after, uh, finance has had an opportunity.
I can bring this to the councils and see what the councils would like to do, right? Yeah. So I'm gonna kind of open this up and, and just discuss what we'd like to do if we want to move forward with this tonight. We can, if you guys wanna, uh, you know, assign, you know, wait for, for finance or whatever, I'm, I'm leaving it up to you guys, it's prerogative, and I'll just, you know...
Mr. President, I would like to move on that tonight.
Okay. Anyone else want to chime in on that?
No, not as long as we can discuss it. I mean, we've had no discussion, so I'd like to discuss it.
Okay, right, we'll have, we'll have discussion in the motion. So it sounds like we can go ahead and, are you guys okay with that? All right.
Mr. President, I would prefer that it go into finance, so if we could have a, a call of vote of who prefers to go into Finance Committee and who would like to discuss it this evening.
Okay, I think that's very fair. So that, that's procedurally right, right? We can do, okay, just wanna make sure we follow procedures. All right, so...
Counsel, Counsel Giles, Counsel Giles.
There's already a motion on the floor. Sharon already made the first motion to vote on it tonight.
Was that a motion or just...
No, I was just asking, because I'm entertaining a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just trying to get a prerogative of what you guys wanted to do.
Counsel Russell's trying to...
Yeah, sorry.
Hi, I, um, can, I, I didn't understand, I can only hear you, uh, Counsel Giles, can you tell me if, if, I'm getting kind of muddled through everybody talking, uh, so who's, what's on the floor, what's not?
Okay, I'll try to say it a little clearer. So, the, um, uh, proposal number nine, we have a public hearing for that tonight, but it has not had a finance meeting. We could either choose to, um, send it to Finance, or we could choose to, um, discuss it and vote on it tonight. And so I was, I'm, I'm in diff, you know, I don't really care which way we go, and so I wanted to leave it as the prerogative of the council to see if they wanted to assign it or do it. And so I think Counsel Russomoroff gave a very good, uh, suggestion that we just take a vote, um, amongst us if we would like to send this to Finance, or if we would like to discuss it tonight.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Just one other thing, if I may, just to clarify, this is wrapped up in your settlement of the, um, litigation that you all approved, and that did include a term that you would deal with this expeditiously. Um, it, that didn't have a date certain by which you had to act, but certainly indicated your intent to, to move as quickly as possible. So just kind of wanted to point that out as well.
That, that, is that specifically on the back page, Common Council, Other Services and Charges, and Other Services and Charges of Corporation Council?
Yes.
Those are the two things out of the, the list that you're speaking of?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I wanted to go ahead and make that motion. It wasn't a comment, but it was a motion to go ahead and...
Oh, you want to make a mo, okay, so you'd like to make a motion to, go ahead, go ahead, see if you can...
I'll second.
To vote on it tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And did you second that?
I'll second that.
All right.
You seconded it?
Uh, Counsel, uh, Russell.
So this is just a motion to hear it tonight, which is essentially Counsel Russomoroff's request.
Request, right.
And if that passes, then someone can make a motion to her.
Her request.
Oh, her request is for finance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counsel Freeman's request was to hear it tonight.
Okay.
So she just did a motion to vote to hear it tonight.
Okay.
And it's been seconded. So we'll do a quick roll call vote, and then we'll have a motion on the, depending on how it goes, then we'll, right, okay, I'm just making, I'll check.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Together, we'll get it in straight.
I'm sorry to interject, um, but given what the attorney has advised us on the expeditious manner of this, and the importance of getting this through with the settlement, I will withdraw that request for a poll. It seems as if the rest of the council is anxious to get this moving on, so I would go ahead as long as there's some discussion tonight, as Counsel Chavis has suggested.
Okay, absolutely.
So then Freeman would be a motion to adopt?
So this is, so let's change it, yeah, to a motion to adopt. Absolutely.
And then Lauren would be second?
Make sure my phone's off.
Lauren would be second, and then discussion.
Right.
Before we vote.
Right, that's right. So it's been moved, it's been seconded, and now we can, um, we can have some, now we're open for discussion.
Okay.
So any, any questions?
Yes, so for, for the, um, I just want to know for the items, I mean, it's clear what the last two items are for.
Right.
Um, but for the items under Police Department and Fire Department, if somebody could just come forward and say what those specific line items are for, that would be great. Thank you.
Nope, nope.
What happened to your arm?
We moved today some stuff into 38s and it got sliced. Sliced, so...
Do you know anybody empty?
Yeah. So, uh, for stuff that we have listed there, there's, Counsel Danny had asked me for a detailed list of the, um, repairs for the tower. The tower's 23 years old, and we've never had any major work done on it. And so we, pictures, had scope of work, um, it's a four-story building, and there's only one electrical outlet that works in the whole four stories. Roof and siding's coming off, so we, and he had asked for all those details, so you should have that, um, in, in the original form. So that, and we've had a pretty rough time with sickness and, um, accidents, so there was like three months there, four months, we had tend-to-toe people fall at one time, which caused us a lot of overtime to back fill those positions. So that's where the 150,000 hours of overtime came in. Training, we had to cut that out, uh, out of last year's budget because they, it wouldn't have been balanced, so we had to withdraw that. So there were some trainings that we've had to hold back on, um, and I think there was a couple radios there. I think that, that was the bulk with, um, Counsel Chavis, I think.
So, so for Personal Services, 150,000, just cover the overtime?
That's the overtime, yeah.
That wasn't part of the budget, that you just need those funds? And then 10,260 dollars is for training?
Training, yes.
Elated items? And then the 136,650 is for repairs to the tower?
There's 41,000 dollars for repairs to the tower, and, um, I think the 10,200 dollars is a specific training, it's for a permac refresher. There's another 10,000 hours that's incorporated there, just the regular training that we couldn't put in last year's budget, or put in this year's budget.
This year's budget, that's what I want to get clear.
So that means this is budget we did last year for?
For this year, so that means that this year's no longer balanced.
What do you mean, this year's? We do know we had to cut it out, they wouldn't...
No, but you go, so you didn't put these training, you knew you had these needs when you were creating the budget, but if you would have put them in, you would have had an unbalanced budget. So they, so you didn't put them in to have a balanced budget, and now we're in the ninth month of the year, and now we're putting it back in, so at the end of the day, the balances, the expenditures and the income didn't balance for the year.
Yeah.
If I'm, if I'm just track, I'm just tracking, I'm just tracking.
Conversations I had with Counsel Chavis when she was the former president, she said, we had a conversation up there, and she said, it's okay to leave that stuff out because just come to the council and, and let us hear that, and we'll appropriate the, the extra funds. So there was conversations with counselors, and along with Sean, Counsel Danny, too. So it's not something that was done deliberately, it's just that we...
These are the, these are the others that were cut out?
That's, that's all I'm saying, I'm just tying it all up together.
That we said, in order for you to get that, you need to come back to the council and request.
Right.
And say we guarantee, I can request it and appropriation.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Right.
So for the 136,650 dollars for capital, what makes up the capital, um, amount for 136,650?
If, do you allow me to run back upstairs and grab that, and I'll let the police chief know about the...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Let me, so you have the exact...
Do you know, one, one real quick question? That tower, is Ivy Tech still using that facility?
They're still using, and what we do is, we share the expenses for the props and stuff there, so, um, we use it, they use it.
Understand.
There's a calendar that's kept between the two, so between the two, there's not like anything official in writing. We've just helped each other out for the last 20-some years. Uh, we use it.
Do they still use the facility?
Yeah.
That's all they...
They give us some stuff that goes on, like supplies, stuff like, as far as the power is sold now.
Okay.
Thank you. Mother.
All right, the things that we had actually for appropriations, uh, is dealing with, um, officer shortage right now, so, um, we're asking for ammunition. We didn't get any this year, so we're asking for ammunition to fund us for next year, um, as well as firearms. We actually, when officers retire, they get their firearms with it, and so what we're doing is just replacing those firearms that are going to be gone, since we're having the, a few officers that are retiring.
So that's under the supplies?
Um, that's under, um, under the description under the 422015 account, out of operating, and the, um, administrative costs. Did everyone get this right here? It's appropriation?
Yes, it's on our agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but, I mean, just tell me what bucket under the, the proposal that it's going under.
Uh, let me see, let me grab my phone.
So if I'm looking at proposal nine, the ordinance, it says Police Department, and it has one, two, it has four categories. Personnel services.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, wait a minute.
So those are, those are the only ones I, I just want to know, like, what makes up the 100,000? Personnel services?
Okay.
And then on down the line?
Sorry, I'm trying to get through this room.
No problem, take your time.
Okay, yeah, the Personnel Services, that's for our overtime, that's 100,000 for that. The Supplies for the 140,000, that is for the, like, the drones, the fly cameras and everything else that are underneath that one. And then for the, um, Other Services and Charges, I believe that was all grouped in when it came to, um, like, the tasers is actually put in with the Supplies, but the tasers are also outside of that one, because we didn't have a specific account number that that was under when we first initially did this one. And then the, the 480,000, I believe that's the, that's the total of everything, so some of the Supplies is going to be the tasers, is going to be the ballistic shields and the ballistic vests that we have, and some of the radios, the APX radios that we need, because right now, we currently are, are seven down. We have seven spare radios, and we're trying to get eight additional ones to outfit the rest of our department as far as like the reserves and the rest of our merit officers to get us up to authorized manpower string.
And is somewhere on here the, what was it called? The, um, piece of equipment that I think you had a match for?
Um, that's, uh, well, we haven't got the grant yet for the Bearcat, so it wasn't a match. It was only 150,000 dollars that they would gift toward that if we're awarded that grant from, um, from the state of Indiana.
So is that in here anywhere?
Uh, no, that is not.
You don't need that money now?
No, we still haven't even received, we haven't even got no...
You asked before, four months ago.
Right, so unfortunately, it takes a while for the state to try to give up some money, so hopefully we get that grant.
I'll just try to hold it all together, that's all.
Okay, and then what, what is, what makes up the 55,000?
I'm sorry, I have that, the 55,000 was the interior drone, the pole cam, and the fly cameras is the 55,000. That was the one that was the other that was put on here, the capital. And then 185,000 was the radios, the uniform supplies, um, and some of the professional services, like the professional services and some of it is dealing with our psychological exams, so whenever we hire a new officer, they go through psychological exams, and then they come on that way, in which we were, uh, we depleted our funds at...
I want to go back to this Bearcat, though, because we had some officers that were shot at. And if I remember, you guys called me personally at home and pulled at my heartstrings and told me about how you guys were so endangered, and these guys out here got these high caliber weapons, and you need this to shield, and now we're dolging out the money, and it ain't on the list. I, that's why I have a hard time understanding what is really a priority, or what's not a priority, and then, uh, 'cause, 'cause one minute I'm like, well, gosh, why didn't he put it in his budget? And then now we're appropriating in the middle of the year, we're about to go into another budget time, and if this thing is needed to protect the officers, I don't care about a grant.
Right, I mean...
One of the things that we spend money on, I don't want to lose off, I don't want to lose an officer, and I know you guys don't want to lose an officer, because we didn't buy this needed shield that was needed. You called me at home.
Yeah, I mean, that is something that we do need for the department. Right now, we have the MRAP that's been around since 2016, it's an older vehicle, it's not as much, you can't maneuver that vehicle as much as you can a Bearcat right now.
Right, that's what you told me.
Um, the lead time on the Bearcat is actually a year, it's a year out, um, so, um, right now, uh, the grant is supposed to come through, hopefully we are awarded that grant, but that's not until September.
You wanted the money through, but you wanted it through ARC monies, and it was demanding, and it hadn't been in the ARC plan, and then it got in the ARC plan, the last ARC plan, and now we're, we're giving money out. I just, I just, I don't know, I'm sorry, I won't, I'll divulge, but I just don't understand.
May I ask a question?
Yes, please.
If you are not to obtain the grant, what will, how will those funds be used, or will they be reinstituted into the ARC funds, or how will that work?
I mean, that's still our, our hope and request, that we are still able to get the Bearcat. However, if we are awarded the funds and we don't use the funds, that goes back to the state of Indiana, because it's, it's specific toward that actual grant purchase item. Um, the state won't let us know until this month. Hopefully this month, that's when they told us that they'll let us know if we'll get any funding from that.
And what if the grant is not awarded?
That's something that we will still stress, that we do need as a, as a piece of our equipment for our SWAT team.
So, Mr. President, are you suggesting that if the grant is not awarded?
You still buy it.
Okay, that's what I was...
I'd suggest we buy it today. I mean, if you call me at home and talk to me for two hours, pull at my heartstrings, and tell me that officers are gonna die, and now it's time to spend the money, and it ain't on the paper, this is why I question everything. And, and so...
Mr. President, can he come back for an appropriation at another time?
We're about to go into the budget, we're about, next, hopefully we'll be setting the budget for 24.
It's a question.
Oh, I'm, so, so I'm answering it. It's September, this is typically the budget season, am I incorrect? We're typically setting the budget for 24, and so we're doing a special, this is the first time of, that I can remember that us doing a, uh, appropriation this late in the year. Tom, please correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, we've done them, but it's not been this amount.
And it's kind of rare, right? And so I'm, I'm open, I'm saying, I'm being open, I'm not holding anything, and I'm just saying that, you know, if we're here right now, and we're, we've kind of, you know, we all know that we've kind of stalled some things, and, you know, I mean, you know, and so now we're at the table, and, um, you know, the purse is open, and you guys know also, too, the complaint is appropriations take too long, right? I mean, that was the one reason why you guys didn't want appropriation, so trying to do appropriation and, again, you know, I mean, I'm just saying, like, if you ask the money from the ARC, and now we're in the general fund, the money's there, I don't understand concise of planning. I'm just trying to figure out what is the strategic plan, what are the priorities? And I know that officer safety is number one, and there is no price that we're, we pay.
And I also want to emphasize officer, um, safety as it relates to making sure we have enough manpower as well to operate the streets of...
I asked you guys last year if you needed more money for officers, and you told me you were fine. I truly did. I asked you, did you need more money in the budget for officers last year, and you were okay? I know I asked that question, because we've been, because I know that we've been down for, you know, a few years. But I grew agree, we need to off, we need to, absolutely, we need to hire more officers. These streets are crazy out here.
Is this, um, another question may I ask, seeing that's open for discussion? Um, is there any reason why this appropriation bill that was proposed, is this connected to anything, as our counselor said in the beginning, to the resolution, um, that has been brought forth?
Yeah, 'cause she asked you.
Sure. Um, so, Counsel, the answer is yes. Under Common Council, Other Services and Charges, and proposal nine is 260,000 dollars. Um, that's 250 under that settlement proposed, 10,000 for, uh, the work of, um, the drone, and then Corporation Council, the 75, my understanding is that Mr. Osma's firm has already been paid approximately 190,000 dollars in claims that the council has already approved, and this remaining 75 makes both firms equal to 250,000 dollars apiece pursuant to the settlement agreement that the council approved. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Are we, okay to bring Chief back up to discuss his deal, or do we want to?
Okay. So, um, looking at my notes upstairs, some of the stuff that we had asked for additionally in the ARC money that Dingle looked at, so we put it into, some of it went to the additional appropriations. Um, there was 52,144 in there for extrication equipment, that's the, uh, the common term is jaws alive. We haven't updated that equipment since 2011. 2011, that equipment was bought, we haven't done anything with that equipment at all, so that 52,144 brings most of that stuff up, up to date. Total replacement would be like well over 200,000, but, um, we just dig what we felt was needed right now. It's not, there's nothing that has to be replaced totally, so we're trying to be fiscally responsible there. And then we had, there's like 12,000 dollars with the radios in there, uh, the 10,000 dollars additional train and 43,000 dollars for the tower. And you should all have the package that shows all the pictures and scope of work for the tower.
Very, very well done.
And, and we had a couple different firms come out there because I know a lot of times when people deal with municipalities, those costs go up. So I wanted to make sure that we got some fair estimates and, um, they, they, they worked pretty relative with, with one another. We did, we did, went with the lower one, um, but they've had done work for us in some of the firehouses and that was adequate work, so. So all of it, uh, I just wanted to make sure, not all of it had to do with, um, the budget. Part of it did, but the other part was through the, the art funding. So we had to do an additional appropriation. We thought we could make it through, but we had some extended circumstances with some of the sickness. That's what boosted that overtime up quite a bit. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sorry, I had to.
Any more questions? Any more questions? You can call for a vote, for discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, a roll call vote, and we'll start over here with Counselor Chevla.
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Counselor Giles? I'm gonna, um, refrain.
Abstain.
Abstain. Counsel Freeman?
Yes.
Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Counsel Russomoroff?
I would abstain as well.
Oh, Counsel Russell?
Yes.
Is there, Counselor Denny? No.
Six, two.
All right, moving right along. We have, uh, hopefully I could just.
Do you have to do them each separately or can I group them all in?
Group them all.
I can group them all.
Okay, all right, thank you. So in new business, proposal number 10, proposal number 11, proposal number 12, 13, and resolution, resolution 10, no, not resolution 10, I'm sorry. Proposal 10, 11, 12, and 13 will be assigned to finance.
And to clarify for the record, Mr. President, we just either read them by title or explain that they're all the budget and side ordinances.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, so these, all these proposals are related to the, uh, budget process, um, for 2024. So we want to assign those to, to committee, uh, so that they can be discussed. Fair enough? All right. Also, um, if you could read by title, resolution number 10?
Resolution number 10, 2023, introduced by Counsel Denny. A resolution to adopt application form and evaluation rubric for community service grants for the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana.
All right, and this will be assigned to the, the grant committee?
Yep.
Yeah, yes. So this will be assigned to the grant committee.
Counsel, President Giles, I forgot to say one thing under comments of the council, it completely slipped my mind. May I?
Please.
So this week we learned that, um, Officer Hazelwood lost his companion, his dog that served with him for seven years. Yeah, so it's been, been pretty rough for Adam and the whole police force. So I, I meant to say that earlier. I forgot to read my note.
Yeah.
Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Well, and I'm glad you brought that up too, because I remember seeing that and reading about that and, um, you know, that's, uh, it really is terrible. Truly, truly, it's truly, truly.
I know of, I know of two situations where that dog intervened and saved the life of two officers. So it's been tough, tough couple days for Adam, so thank you for allowing me to mention that.
I tell you guys, um, not to get too crazy, but I've never been a dog person, but I got a little dog now the last three years and it's changed my little life. So it's a little, saying that to me always serves, but feeling it today, I'm a little more compassionate today than I did yesterday.
Mr. President, can we ask, um, the chief while he's here, is there any special services that we should be aware of then?
Yeah, like, I mean, this is something new to us, you know, like, yeah, thank you, that's a great question, you know, like, what happens?
Yeah, so we're still in the, um, early phases of trying to figure out when that ceremony is going to take place. It will be at the police department, so we're trying to get some final details ironed out and everything so we can make sure we make proper, you know, recognition to Officer Hazelwood, Sergeant Hazelwood, as well as Chado, the partner.
Ch, Ch, Chado, Chado?
Chado.
Chado, okay. Well, that's, that's cool, man. I really sincerely, my heart really does go out to, to the department and, uh, and everybody that's involved with the dog, honestly. It's just, it's just really bad, man. All righty, well, um, I think that's it. Um, and, uh, God bless you all. Meeting adjourned.